Good evening. We will call to order the meeting, the September 28, 2011, meeting of the Edina Planning Commission. Jackie, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Forrest.
Here.
Commissioner LaRue.
Here.
Chair. Here. We have a quorum and the meeting is properly constituted. The first item of business is approval of the meeting agenda. Are there any comments or concerns about the agenda? Hearing none, we will... Is there a motion to approve the agenda? So moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. Next item on the agenda, approval of consent agenda. The first item is minutes of the September 14, 2011, meeting. You've received those in your packet. In fact, I received two of them. Any comments or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, there's a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Thank you. Next item is community comment. During community comment, the Planning Commission invites residents to share new issues or concerns that have not been considered by the Commission in the last 30 days, which are not slated for future consideration. Did I say that right? Which have not been considered in the last 30 days and which are not scheduled for future consideration, also which aren't on the agenda tonight. Are there any community comments? Comments from anybody in the audience? Okay. Next item is public hearings. I will tell you in advance, there are two items on the public hearing agenda. One is a front yard setback variance for 5413 Doncaster Way. The second is a conditional use permit by the Edina Public Schools. There is also on the agenda tonight, a sketch plan review and three zoning ordinance amendments that we're going to discuss. Those are not public hearing items. They've not been noticed for public hearing and I do not intend to conduct a public hearing on those items. So we have received some communications concerning at least one of the items, but we're not going to hold a public hearing on that tonight. So don't want anybody to be surprised when that happens. So the first item of business under public hearings, item B-11-08, front yard setback variance, Scott Bussen, Great Neighbor Bussen, excuse me, Great Neighborhood Homes, 5413 Doncaster Way in Edina.
The subject property is located at 5413 Doncaster Way. Property is highlighted here. It's on the east, it's located on the east side of Doncaster. It backs up to Highland School. You can see it here. And again, here. It's a rambler. The home is going to be removed for development. They're requesting a 14.35-foot front yard setback variance from the average front yard setback requirement of 43.5 feet to allow a front yard setback for a new two-story home to be built on the property in place of the existing home that currently provides a front yard setback of 28.7 feet. This is a photograph of the house to the north and also to the south. This is the subject property, a survey of the subject property. It does show you, it's a little difficult to see, but there's a front yard setback of 28.7 feet. It's very similar in setback to the house to the south. The house to the north is much further back. The property owner, Scott Bussen, is requesting a front yard setback variance to build a two-story home with a footprint of 2,473.4 square feet. The ordinance indicates that the setback from the street is determined by averaging the front yard setbacks of the adjacent homes on either side. So once that existing home is removed, the property has to conform to the current average setback. The property to the north at 6409 Doncaster Way is 58.1 feet from the front lot line and the property to the south at 5417 is 29 feet away. So there's a pretty big difference in setback between the two. That ends up with a required average setback of 43.5 feet. The house that is being proposed is actually at 29.2 feet, which is a bit further back than the 28.7 feet of the existing home that's there right now. The new home would be designed to conform to all of these zoning ordinance requirements. This is an elevation of the front of the house, showing what the new home would be looking like. The new home would actually improve upon the setback just slightly. The subject property is 16,791 square feet in area. The existing home was built in 1954 and predates the current front yard setback requirements and is much closer to Doncaster Way than the proposed house will be, not much closer, just slightly closer. Many of the homes along Doncaster Way, including the subject home, were built years before the current minimum front yard setback standard was established. There was not an average at the time. The proposed home is a two-story home with an attached three-stall garage. The proposed first floor elevation of the home will be two feet lower than the existing home that was, had a first, has a first floor elevation of 914 and 1/2. The finished materials include shake siding and hardy panel trim. The primary issues, and if you were supplied with a compliance table, the house meets all of the setback requirements, height requirements, coverage requirements. The maximum lot coverage is 25%. The house will actually be less than 50%, 15% lot coverage. Here's the rear elevation and two side elevations. This would be the basement, first floor, and upper floor of the house. The primary issue is the proposed development reasonable for the site? Staff believes the proposal is reasonable for four reasons. The proposed use is permitted in the R1 single dwelling zoning district and complies with all of the requirements with the exception of the front yard setback. The new home would improve slightly upon the disparity in front yard setback between the existing home to the home and the home to the north. The home is appropriate in size and scale for the lot. The new home is actually much smaller by ordinance standards. It could be much closer to the side yards. It could occupy much more of the lot. The new home has been shifted slightly further back on the lot than the existing home with an open porch. The open porch is actually 29 and 1/2 feet, with the remainder of the home actually at 35.2 feet from the front lot line. So most of the home is further back than that 29 feet. The home would maintain the character of the neighborhood and would be slightly further back from the street than the existing home that's been there for 57 years. There's no consistency in front yard setbacks between the properties to the north and to the property to the south of the subject property. The home to the south is much closer at 29 feet to the property line and is consistent with the location of the existing and proposed home for the subject property. The home to the north is twice as far back from the street as the subject home and home to the south is, south is the subject property. Actually, this variance request was supposed to be heard at your last Planning Commission meeting. However, the property owner to the south contacted the owner, the developer of the site, and requested that instead of, the variance was still going to be requested from front yard setback, but it was going to be further back from where they're proposing it this evening. But that property owner actually wanted to bring it up closer to where that existing home is so it wouldn't impact his views towards the backyards. So actually, the reason why this is now on a later agenda is because the property owner, the developer who owns the property, wanted to work with that neighbor to the south. Is the proposed variance justified? Will it relieve practical difficulties that prevent a reasonable use from complying with the ordinance requirements? Reasonable use does not mean the applicant must show that the land cannot be put to any reasonable use without a variance. However, the applicant must show that there are practical difficulties in complying with the code. Staff does believe the proposed variance is reasonable. The required front yard setback along the block varies, with the proposed front yard setback slightly further back on the lot than the existing home that has been occupying the site for 57 years. Are there circumstances that are unique to the property? Yes, the unique circumstances are the variation in front yard setback between the home to the north and the home to the south. These are quite large, wide lots, so it's not as if the homes or the structures are going to be very close and this house has twice probably the setback that's needed on either side. Will the variance alter the essential character of the neighborhood? The proposed home would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The new home matches and improves slightly on the front yard setback from Doncaster Way that's existing. Staff recommends approval. Approval is based on the following findings. With the exception of the variance, the proposal would meet the required standards and ordinances for the R1 district. The proposal would meet the required standards for a variance. The proposed use of the property is reasonable as it is consistent with surrounding properties and matches the nonconforming setback that has historically been provided by the existing home. The imposed setback limits design opportunities by forcing the home towards the back of the lot. A conforming new home would locate the front of the house halfway behind the front wall of the home to the south, ultimately affecting their ability. If they were going to add on to their home, they would then have to average that new home to the north for their front yard setback. The intent of the ordinance is to maintain an even and consistent streetscape, given surrounding property improvements. The proposed home location will be consistent with the location of that existing home that's there right now. The unique circumstances are the original placement of the home built along the block. Approval of any variance should be subject to the following conditions: that a survey date stamped August 31, 2011, and that the building plans and elevations are date stamped August 17, 2011. Any permit submission is consistent with those. And with that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Are there questions of staff? Commissioner Carpenter?
Chris, just to clarify, the concerns of the neighbor, generally it was to the south or the north, have those then been fully addressed to his or her satisfaction at this point?
To my knowledge, you can ask the applicant. My understanding was that's why it was delayed, is because he wanted to work with. If you look at the survey, they're now lined up in the front. The house is a bit deeper back, but to push it even further back, I guess, was really going to impact his view into the backyards.
Just so I understand, is this the same as what was before us at the last, was withdrawn before the last meeting? Did they move that setback?
The setback is closer to the street than it was before.
So this proposal moves the house closer to the street?
Yes.
Okay. Than the original proposal?
Correct. The house plans, the footprint, everything is exactly the same.
They're all the same.
The location was troubling to the fellow from the, to the south.
Okay, thank you. Other questions of staff? Mr. Plattigar?
What's the difference between what it was last time and what it is now, do you recall?
Boy, I don't know if I remember exactly, but it was, it's, it pulled it up. I'd have to look at it, but I think it's, it was pulled up, the, it's pulled up about, what was it, 10 feet or so? Do you remember? Five feet? Okay. I thought it was for the, it was about five feet.
Other questions of staff? Thank you. Would the applicant care to make any remarks? Please come forward, identify yourself.
Scott Bussen, Great Neighborhood Homes.
Might be, might be easier if you stand at the side podium there.
Scott Bussen, Great Neighborhood Homes. Live at 4615 Wooddale Avenue. Yeah, we are building this home. The intent was to build a home that, you know, fit the neighborhood, blend it in. So we had a neighbor meeting before we started and said we're going to go for this variance because we believe that the home, if we use the city's average setback, you know, the arithmetic criteria, would push the house too far back. It would be with, almost more than half the house is behind the neighbor to the south. So, you know, we had the neighbor meeting, I showed the neighbors the surveys and they were in favor of, you know, what we were doing, the intent of us trying to get the house to not block their views in the backyard. But the neighbor to the south asked me, is there any possible way to move it even more forward so we can make, you know, my view in the back even, you know, maintained even better? So we went back and looked at it and also they asked if we could, you know, make a slight reduction to the ridge height, which we're able to do. So, you know, typically it's, you know, we, the intent that we can build the house without the variance, yeah, at the city's average, it's just we're trying to work within the, all the setbacks to position the house in a way that optimizes the streetscape of the neighborhood and also the views of both neighbors. You can see also on the, on the plan I bring with me, but that the garage portion of the house was designed so the neighbor to the north can, it's sort of staggered, so she's got a view out towards the street. So we really designed the home to almost fit the same footprint, kind of an L shape that was there before. Any more questions?
Questions of the applicant? Mr. Forrest?
I'm just curious, what is the final ridge height and what was it previously? How much were you able to reduce it?
We reduced it about 17 inches. So it went from approximately 28 to, you know, about 26.7.
Commissioner Carpenter?
I'd just like to make one comment, which is really to commend you for working with the, with the neighborhood. Not everybody does that and it makes, I think, our job a lot easier if everybody's satisfied with the outcome.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any member of the public wish to comment on this proposal? Please come forward and give us your name and address.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, my name is George Watson. I live at 5417 Doncaster Way, immediately south of this, this site. And I do want to thank Scott for his efforts to, to really do what he could to protect the privacy in my backyard. I've lived in this home for 26 years and one of the things I've found is that the backyards of these homes in this neighborhood are, are very private and very, very much a throughway for children in the neighborhood. I know you put a sidewalk in recently, but I'll tell you there are more kids traveling through the backyard than there are in the front. So I do appreciate Scott's efforts to lower his building height. My building is, is a typical ranch style from the 50s. It's 12.8 feet height, high, so this is going to tower over my house. But I, I don't think that I can legislate style, so I'm not trying to do that here. But I do, I do hope you'll consider this. It's very important to myself and my wife and I know I have talked to the neighbor at the north at 5409, Andrea Albertson, and she's in accord with this change as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Would anyone else care to make any comments? I'll turn this off as soon as I can figure out how. Any other comments? Okay, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Comments by the commission? Commissioner Carpenter?
I would just say generally this falls within the scope of what I think we've approved in the past. I think the proposal's reasonable and if we get to the point where we're going to make a motion, then I'd be happy to make a motion in favor of this as well.
Thank you. Other comments? Commissioner Potts?
I, I like this solution. I think even though it's, it's seeking a variance, it meets all the intents of the ordinance and in fact improves on the streetscape. I like the front porch very much.
Other comments? Any other discussion by the, Commissioner Forrest?
Well, one of the factors is, will the variance alter the essential character of the neighborhood? And in correspondence, it was pointed out that the style is different from the significant majority of homes on the street. On the other hand, I think that some good compromises have been made. Also, it appears to me on the map, the plot map or whatever it's called, that this particular lot is somewhat shallower than the other homes along that block, which can further limit the options, especially in order to maintain the neighbor's backyard privacy. So I don't know if that would be something that would be worth putting into findings or not, but...
We could certainly add that to the findings. You're, during the map, it does appear that that's the, that lot has the least depth of any along that stretch of the street. Other comments? Is there a motion? Mr. Carpenter?
I would make a motion to approve the application, taking into account the findings and conditions in the staff report and also incorporating Commissioner Forrest's comments with respect to the lot depth of the site.
Is there a second?
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve the application based on the findings and conditions in the staff report and adding the finding with respect to the lot depth. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The application is approved. On a variance like this, there is a two-week appeal time. They can take this to the City Council if they wish. Other than that, you are free to proceed. The next item of business is 2011.009.11A, conditional use permit for classroom addition for the Edina Public Schools at 4725 South View Lane in Edina.
It's a conditional use permit for 4725 South View Lane, which is South View Middle School. And that encompasses the entire site, is highlighted, which includes the athletic fields and also the community center. A little bit closer detail here of the site. And then this is the subject area of improvement for the building addition. It's a two-story addition, sort of squaring off the corner in the southeast corner at South View Middle School. This is showing that improvement in the, this addition. And then there's also a slight improvement in the, in the building that's, that's a remodeling. Edina Public Schools are proposing to build a 5,600-square-foot two-story addition to South View Middle School located at 4725 South View Lane. The addition would include a new kitchen for the cafeteria and various classroom space. The building addition would be setback 117 feet from the front property line. This is Concord along here, would be 117 feet away from the lot line. A conditional use permit is required for the expansion because the property is owned R1 and schools are conditional uses within the R1 district. The existing 28-acre site contains South View Middle School, the Edina Community Center, athletic facilities for the schools. The grading that is going to be proposed for the site would generally remain the same. The city engineers reviewed the proposed plans and found them to be acceptable. The parking calculations are based on capacity of the largest places of assembly. Parking, parking space is equal to 1/3 the maximum seating capacity. The largest places of assembly is required. There is shared parking arrangement between South View Middle School and the Edina Community Center. Each facility contains a gymnasium, which is the largest place of assembly. The gymnasium capacity for each building is 765 for South View, 860 for the community center. Therefore, the required number of parking spaces is 542 for the campus. There are four parking fields for these facilities with a total of 554 parking stalls. Therefore, the campus provides enough parking spaces per the ordinance. The City Council shall not grant a conditional use permit unless it finds that the establishment, maintenance, and operation of the use does not have an undue adverse impact on government facilities, utilities, services, or existing or proposed improvements. The proposal for a small addition to the school will have no impact on the previously mentioned conditions for conditional use. It will, will it generate traffic with, within the capacity of the street serving the property? The proposal shouldn't generate any more traffic, given what the improvements are. It does not have an undue or adverse impact on public health, safety, or welfare. Again, there will be no impact as the use of the property remains the same as it exists today. And that it will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of other property in the city. The addition will be constructed to match the existing school and fits into that space, its infilling space. Conforms to the applicable restrictions and special conditions of the district in which it is located. The new addition would conform to all applicable zoning ordinance requirements and we're given a table illustrating that they do meet all of the requirements necessary for the zoning ordinance and that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The school is conditionally used permitted in the R1 district and therefore is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Primary issue is the proposed new building addition reasonable for the site? Staff believes the proposal is reasonable for the following reason. The proposal meets the conditional use permit findings. The proposal meets all minimum zoning ordinance standards, all setback requirements and parking requirements. The proposed addition would match the existing school. I do have, they did provide a materials board, which I can share with you, and it will match all of the requirements for finishes that exist there today. The proposed addition addresses building spaces needs at the school. It's a very minimal addition. Staff recommends approval of a conditional use permit to build an addition to South View Middle School. Approval is based on the following findings. The proposal meets the conditional use permit conditions. The proposal meets all applicable zoning ordinance requirements. The addition addresses the building space needs of the school. Any approval is subject to the following conditions. If necessary, approval of site work from the Minnehaw Creek Watershed District plans may be revised per the conditions of the Watershed District and a building permit must be obtained within two years of City Council approval. And with that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chris. I, I have, what's the source of the condition about the two-year building permit? Is that in the, is that in the ordinance someplace?
I believe that's part of the conditional use permit process. That, I mean, a building permit, you have to complete within a year's time. So they would have two years to get the permit and then they'd have a year to finish.
Okay. Other questions of staff? Thank you.
Good evening. Margot Nash, Director of Business Services, representing Edina Public Schools. Appreciate your time and consideration for our conditional use permit. It is to enhance the student learning space. We are very tight at South View Middle School, especially in our cafeteria area when we have a large number of students flowing through to eat their meals. And we also have need for some additional instructional space. So we would request your approval of our conditional use permit and answer any questions that you have. I also have representative from Wold Architects, the district architect, Nick Marcucci here. And just for background, this request is reflecting about a year process through the board and looking at our facility needs. And this was one area that was identified that... And this was one area that was identified that is an immediate need because of the space issue to take care of now within the next year. They are continuing to look at our long-term facility needs.
Thank you. Questions of the applicant? I have two, just to make sure that we're clear on things, make sure that I'm clear on things. This just squares off the, squares off the corner of the school. It doesn't extend out either direction. Is that correct?
It does not.
Mr. Marcucci?
It does not go beyond the existing building, so it just squares that out.
Okay. And the second question concerns the, the materials that are here. I assume those are identical or as identical as possible to the existing facade materials at the school?
Yeah, they're a very good match.
Very good. Other questions of the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would members of the public wish to comment on this proposal? Seeing nobody coming forward, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing. For a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The motion is passed. We'll bring this matter up to the Commission for comment or questions. Comments by the Commission? You know, Ms. Nash, I just thought of one other question. I gather you intend to begin on this right away, and you're not going to wait two years once you get a building permit. Is that right?
That is correct. We are in need of space. As I said earlier, we will begin as soon as we can get the bid process going. The intent is to have the addition, we'll do some work during the school year, but we are limited in the amount we can do during the school year. The remainder to be done during the summer and have the addition ready to go for the start of school 2012.
Very good. Thank you. I'll allow anybody from the public that wants to, yes?
Could we just get, for people who were notified about this, it's very, we got maps that made it very unclear where the addition is going. And it's a little bit difficult to even understand on the board. Is there, I mean, the maps that we received with our notices were almost invisible?
Okay. I gather this is the southeast corner of the building?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you put this up on the screen?
Yeah, Chris, is it possible to put this up on the screen so people can see for sure?
Scrubbing.
There it is. Thank you. So, that's the southeast corner of the school building. Thank you. Comments or discussion by the Commission? Thanks, Chris. Mr. Carpenter?
I would say in planning vernacular, this is a member of Temple Hill. I think it's, I think it's eminently reasonable, and I really don't see anything wrong with this plan at all. It just makes perfect sense.
Other comments by the Commission? Poetic or not? Mr. Platter?
I just say my daughter goes here in seventh grade, so I know they need the room there.
Other comments? Is there a motion?
Would approve the findings and conditions in the past.
It's been moved. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded that application 2011-00911A for a conditional use permit for the Edina Public Schools be approved, subject to the findings and the conditions as outlined in the staff recommendations. Is there other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The application is approved by the Planning Commission. We now move to reports and recommendations. The first item under reports and recommendations is a sketch plan review by JMS concerning a project known as Bishop's Walk. Chris, do you open this, present this?
I can do just a little brief.
Okay.
This is a sketch plan review for 5016, 5020, and 5024 in Yonola, which is located as highlighted. And it includes the Edina Covenant Church site, the lots that they own here, which is the parking lot. And then, also, there are two single-family homes, lots to the south. So, that would be the site that's in question. Here's a little closer detail of that. The Planning Commission is asked to consider a sketch plan proposal by JMS Homes to redevelop the properties at 5020 and 5024 in Yonola. Those would be the two lots here. And properties owned by the Edina Covenant Church, which would include the two lots adjacent to the west. The proposal is to develop the properties in two phases. And what I was referring to just now was, would be the Phase One. The first phase would be to tear down the existing single-family homes at 5020 and 5024 in Yonola and build six detached homes over those four lots that consist of 26,730 square feet. The new homes would stretch from Indianola to J Place. The surrounding zoning, the subject property is Zoned R1. The church is a conditionally used in the R1 district, so all of that property is Zoned R1. The property to the south and to the west is also Zoned R1. Property to the east, to the south a little bit, is Zoned R1. There are two doubles to the north of the parking lot, and that's Zoned R2. And then, in the northeast corner, across from the church, it's on PRD4, and that's an apartment and/or condo building. A little closer detail of the existing zoning. For the first phase, they are proposing six homes. This is very similar to what the Planning Commission considered back in June. There were seven detached homes that would go from Indianola to J Place on the site. And then, the second phase, the first phase would be the six homes between Indianola and J Place with the top portion of the phase stopping somewhere here. And then, the second phase would incorporate the property that the church is on and then also in this area. The second phase of the development would then add 11 detached homes. The overall proposed density would be 11 units per acre, which would require a comprehensive plan amendment from low-density residential to medium-density residential. It was the same as the previous request. It also would require rezoning for R1 to PRD Planned Residential District. A compliance table was included in your packets, and it did indicate that there were several variances that are required. There would be 10-foot setback variances from Indianola, from 50th Street, and then a 20-foot setback variance required from J Place, a .44% lock coverage variance, and then an eight-foot, eight-foot drive aisle width variance, because the drive aisles are 16 feet in width, and they need to be 24. Staff does have the following concerns regarding the proposed project, the proposed phasing and the site plan. The phasing of the project would propose six units to be built where the seven units were previously proposed. It essentially is the same proposal that was supported by the, that was not supported, pardon me, by the City Council last June. If the church property is available for development, it would seem that the density of the development should occur closer to 50th Street and that the area that is proposed for the first six units should be used as a landscape buffer between the medium-density use and low-density homes to the south. There is a lack of surface parking. As proposed, the only available onsite parking spaces would be underground. Visitor parking would have to occur off-site, presumably on Indianola. Density and the number of variances requested, it appears that the density is too much for the site, given the number of variances required from the zoning that would be needed. And then, the lack of on-street or off-street parking. Concerns raised by the Planning Commission that have not been addressed from the first proposal, lack of area for control of drainage. Concern was raised regarding building coverage and drainage. The plan has more building coverage than the first plan, given that the plan is expanded. Lack of individual storage space, including bikes. The garage entrance coming off of Indianola, a suggestion was made to come off of J Place. Now, there are two coming off of Indianola. Lack of depth and separation of uses. Setbacks remain the same to the single-family homes to the south. And concern over increased in density. The density has not been reduced. There has been one unit eliminated in the first phase, but the proposed, the proposal is 11 units per acre, which was the original, or is same as the original plan. If this is the type of development that is desirable for the city of Edina, it would be appropriate to have the ability to rezone to a PUD planned unit development. Currently, PUD zoning is not available in the R1 district. By utilizing PUD zoning, the city would have greater authority to regulate developments such as requiring affordable housing, sustainable building, any more walkable development. Conditions required in a PUD are much easier to enforce than any conditions placed on standard zoning projects. As with any rezoning, the authority to rezone would still rest with the City Council. Staff would recommend that the Planning Commission and City Council perhaps rethink the prohibition of allowing PUD zoning in the R1 district. And with that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chris. I'm going to be asking the applicant to come up and make a few remarks. I would like to say this about the sketch plan process and why this isn't a public hearing. First, when we adopted the sketch plan concept, the idea behind that was that a developer would have an opportunity to come up with an idea and be able to present that idea in some kind of fashion to the Planning Commission and the City Council to determine if the idea had any legs at all, so to speak. In other words, the developer might come in and propose to redevelop someplace in Country Club and put a gas station on a corner. And they'd come with a sketch plan, and they'd find out that the Planning Commission probably is not in favor of gas stations in the middle of Country Club or my neighborhood or any other place. So, that's the idea of the sketch plan. It gives a developer an opportunity to put some ideas together on paper without spending a lot of money that would be required for a formal site plan application and bring the site plan application in and, you know, spend a lot of money on the site plan to put the gas station in when it's a total waste of money because nobody thinks it's a good idea in the first place. So, that's the idea behind the sketch plan review. We're not here to say that this particular project is a great project to go, to go forward. We're not here to say actually that it shouldn't go forward. It's, it's an idea, it's an opportunity for the developer to, to express some opinions and to get some opinions and thoughts back from the Commission and from the City Council. It's not a formal here. It's not a formal process. There's no notices that go out to the community. And therefore, I think to hold a lot of public comment at this point would be unfair to those people that didn't get notice or didn't have an opportunity to get noticed. So, it's not that I'm not interested in what the public thinks about this. It's just that all of the public hasn't necessarily been notified that this is even going on. So, those of you who are here, and we did receive a memo in the mail today concerning this, this item, I don't want you to feel we're not interested in what you have to say, but it's just my judgment anyway that it's not quite fair and an informal thing like this to have public comment when not all the public's been notified about it. So, that's my call. It's, if you don't like it, take it out on me and not the rest of the Commission members. So, the other comment I have, this is a little bit unusual because I didn't think that we contemplated when we adopted the sketch plan ordinance that we would have serial proposals on the same thing. It tends to give the developer, I think, a little bit of an unfair advantage and maybe create expectations in people's minds that because we've heard essentially the same proposal more than once, that that creates some impression that we are locking ourselves into a particular point of view or a particular action later. So, I, again, I'm not saying this is a great proposal or this is an awful proposal, but what I am saying is just because you hear it a second time doesn't mean we think it's any better or any worse than before and don't read anything into what we have to say here tonight about it. So, enough pontificating. Would the applicant care to make a presentation on this issue?
Sketch plan, am I on that one? Nope. That one. Two clicks. And, Chris, how do I go full? There we go. All right. Well, there's slight differences. Does the overhead work as well for this book?
We can't.
Can we switch? Yeah. Let's just switch to here for a second. You know, I've never, Jeff Shane Wetter, JMS Custom Homes, thanks for hearing from me tonight. I actually am more excited today about Bishop's Walk than I've ever been. And the reason, I spent my day with another architect at the Sensible Land Use Coalition. And there were some members of various municipalities and city leadership, and it was really inspiring. This is a book called Pocket Neighborhoods that, it's a new book, right about there. It's a new book about an old concept. And I think that I'm very fortunate to have spent some time there today. And more importantly, I'm, I'm really, I'm really honored to be able to be here tonight and talk about a process that's informal and informative and gives us some more feedback. Some things have changed in this proposal since you saw it the first time. We've changed our unit dimensions. The, the units before you were roughly 1,000 square feet, which ironically is a perfect A-plus alignment with the concepts outlined in the Pocket Neighborhoods book. The unit sizes have been constrained in both width and depth and height. So, the property nests into the site a little bit better. And while I didn't leave the Planning Commission last time with that type of inference, I certainly got that type of inference when I was at City Council. And then, most importantly, we reduced unit count in Phase One to create less density and to create a buffer transition. Most Pocket Neighborhoods are in the 200% density area, although Edina does not have a PUD ordinance for residential housing, which is unfortunate, and it should, but that's a different night. a different night. We, I want to be forthright and address, you know, we know that some neighbors are not thrilled with the idea of this project. And we also know that there's some residents of Edina that are frankly very anxious to live in the very units that we're proposing. We know that this is not the same as some of the other homes in Edina. And we also know that unless city leadership wants this type of housing in the community, it won't happen. And frankly, I'm thrilled to be able to go through a process where I'll have a good indication of whether there's an appetite for this type of housing before there's a significant effort made. So we believe that these homes are in real demand. We believe that our market research confirms that real demand. And we really see this project as not a host of evils or misfortunes. We see it as just a different type of housing. And I, I'm very sensitive to working with neighbors and with neighborhoods. We have made multiple overtures to host town hall type meetings and there've been invitations that have been extended and rejected to participate in design shareettes with our, our design team. So to what we're doing. Bishop's Walk will have a sense of place, a little bit different sense of place than the typical neighborhood. It's really more of a community within a community. And the environment at Bishop's Walk creates balance, balance for its neighbors, and it de-emphasizes the automobile, that there's a pedestrian influence, there's new sidewalks contemplated. And if I can switch back to my PowerPoint, I'll give you a couple highlights of how we see the project as it's evolved. And then I'm, I'm very interested to hear your feedback as to how that might work. So, single family, a lot of talk about Bishop's Walk being somehow an attached or a multifamily environment. But at-grade, it's street grade, this, these are all detached cottage-type homes. We know we've been here before and what we're doing, but we think 50th and France is sort of an intermediary zone. It's certainly not urban like Uptown and, and yet at the same time, it's sort of a transitional zone. It's not truly suburban. And the walkability and the pedestrian connectivity, we think are all great transitions for this type of housing in this location. Additionally, we have a significant green component to the home in the sense that the green roof manages water runoff, water infiltration, and we, we will not be creating any stormwater issues on third-party properties. This was the presentation I was at this afternoon. When you walk away from hearing about architecture designed to Pocket Neighborhoods for the last 15 years and the lifestyle and amenity that's enjoyed by those residents, you start to say, wow, it's, not everybody wants a big SUV. Some people want a small battery-powered car. And that's the radical difference between the 5,000-square-foot home and the single-family detached homes at Bishop's Walk. These are rather short homes and in stature would be described as story and a half bungalow style architecture, shorter in elevation than any of the homes that surround the site. And that's intentional. We wanted the site to nest or kind of hunker down and not be a McMansion. We've looked at the project actually in three phases. Phase One is now just six units instead of seven. And those are the units you saw before. The potential of Phase Two would take the unit count somewhat higher. And we have two different concepts of how Phase Two might lay out. And you can see that there is a modest difference between the L shape of Concept A and the stacking of Concept B. And it really is that feedback that staff has given us to move some density potentially north if this site was redeveloped. And then the last phase, Phase Three, would be redevelopment of the four duplex units on the corner. I'm going to circle back to that. So it's a transitional housing, there's elevators, there's wide doorways, there's aging-in-place amenities. We see this as a different type of housing than some of the homes that were built here in Edina in the '30s, '40s, and '50s. We see five concepts that are integral to the lifestyle at Bishop's Walk. We can walk to destinations, so we've de-emphasized the automobile. We maintain a sense of identity with existing neighborhoods through both architecture and connectivity. Traditional, traditional architecture, luxury amenities, and then a courtyard, a very important design element, bringing the outside to the inside of each unit. Single-family homes, efficient lot sizes, shared interior spaces, open design, careful window placement. We think that the details is we've conceived this housing type to be very attractive. And the good news is this PowerPoint was put together before lunch today. So kind of fun. Some interior concepts, some of you have been in our homes before and you certainly understand that we are building high-quality homes with very rich architectural details, significant quality, good homes. We, we think that these are flavors that will be sprinkled throughout the homes at Bishop's Walk, assuming we go forward with the project. Interestingly, there is pre-sale interest that is frankly unsurpassed in the history of our company, that there are people watching what we are doing here tonight and they will call tomorrow and say, hey, send me out a floor plan, send me out some literature. And we're getting a wide cross-demographic group, both active professionals and empty nesters. So it's, it's kind of interesting. These are not going to be rental homes. Question came up not long ago, can you rent? No, no, these are for sale homes. We think that this is a prime location and would be very attractive as a housing type here in Edina. Interesting converse. This is a home that we built a few years ago on the corner of Drexel and Bruce. And this is a narrow lot. It was in the historic Country Club district. And when we finished it, it was about 5,100 square feet. So a good-sized home. When you look at the two lots that we have from the church incorporated into Phase One and the two existing homes that we would intend to recycle on Indianola, there are four existing units. And with absolute certainty, we could build four narrow-lot homes. But we don't think that's the right use for this particular piece of real estate for several reasons. One, this home is a rear yard and this home is a side yard. And our plan converts this to rear yard to rear yard, which we think is better. But additionally, these homes would be potentially five feet from their southern property lines where we have a 25-foot rear yard dedication. So nearly 500% the buffer between the existing two stories, which sit down here on Juanita, and the rear yards. So we think that's an improved geometry between the spacing of those homes. If you compare four homes of 5,000 feet in a two-story to three-story configuration, we'd have about 20,000 feet of construction for sale. We don't think that this particular space in our community needs more McMansions and we sincerely want to build very small, well-done homes that are relatively affordable. And I understand debating affordability isn't why I'm here tonight. But we've reduced density from, actually originally, we had a plan of eight when we met with staff. We proposed seven last time we were here. We're now looking at six homes that would have footprints of less than 1,000 square feet, approximately 1,000. Total finishes would not exceed 2,000 feet. So we're talking about only 12,000 square feet of construction. Much smaller, much less total construction. Even though it's six units, which is a 50% density credit, if you would, it's very, very small total construction. Single-family homes in this town exist that are larger than our entire development of 12,000 feet. We think we have what the market wants. We think this flavor of housing is vital. Not that all flavors should be the same, but if we're going to offer 31 flavors, this is certainly one of them. Old-world charm, classic architecture, modern building science. This is a good idea. It's a well-organized site, has thoughtful geometry. We think that there are components to this site that are important. Staff's talked about our parking. Well, our parking ratio exceeds three to one. We would be the highest parked project of its type, period. Three underground parking spaces for every single unit. 18 underground parking spaces. Parking is not a problem. We can add more. Great sidewalk access. One of the concepts here is a new sidewalk where one doesn't currently exist, creating additional connectivity. And that's the red line there in front of you. That sidewalk would be located within the city's right-of-way, so just like any other sidewalk in the community of Edina. We've talked about lifestyle, but we would also have a homeowners association that would be responsible for snow, lawn, sidewalk, and garbage hauling. There would only be one garbage hauler that would visit our neighborhood rather than multiple haulers. It's interesting. I, I certainly wish Edina had a PUD for residential. It's one of the few cities we've done business in that doesn't have a PUD for residential. But you do have a zoning called PRD or PSR. And we used those zoning districts about 10 years ago when we did a project in West Edina, and it worked out very well. Principally, these are single-family homes. They will be proposed to exist on their own lot and block legal descriptions and the garage below-grade would exist by cross easements. So there'd be an easement for the garage amongst the units. The coverage ratios, typo on my slide, for six units would be even less. But generally speaking, we are under a 30% coverage ratio with that calculation, so with six, we're even less. And we'd come up with that. The Green Roof Council has prescribed a method for building green roofs that manage water runoff and retain rainwater. And we've followed the Minnesota Green Roof design standards for the roof of our parking. And we think it's going to create a very, much so, green space, courtyard space, and further de-emphasizes again the automobile and asphalt at-grade outside of these units, enhancing the green space between the units and the courtyards that'll exist there. We, we don't always agree with everyone, but we, we do see this location as a transitional zone between the commercial of 50th and France and the higher-density, both apartments and retail zones that exist. If you look at 50th and France like a compass, you would look at it and say that there's good transition in all directions except this one, that the area to the immediate southwest really does transition very abruptly from higher densities to R1. And some modest transition zone between the single-family that nests into the site between the older, taller, bigger R1 and the future, smaller detached bungalows, we think is a thoughtful transition. And I think you can see that there's a multitude of opportunities for a transitional zoning. The zoning that exists surrounding this site, there are actually six different types. We have on the north, as I was sharing, a multifamily zone, coming into a commercial zone, coming into condominiums and apartments, duplexes, and along France Avenue, of course, a bunch of special-use zones as well. That's a zoning map from the city and the menu of all the different types of zones that could exist are in the, in the left there. I can't say for certainty whether this will end up being PRD or PRS, but one of those two zones, if the project goes forward, would be appropriate and would facilitate what we're trying to accomplish. Green Path, the Builders Association of the Twin Cities, new Green Path program is designed to encourage and emphasize energy efficiency and indoor air quality. When we look at the design criteria for Bishop's Walk, that will be our construction methodology that's adopted as a prescription. We're here looking for feedback. We're here trying to create some different types of housing for our community. We believe that Bishop's Walk is an excellent opportunity to do just that. I do want to address briefly where we're at from a contractual standpoint. And I have some of my land sellers represented here tonight. You did receive a memo that I think mischaracterizes a few facts, so we'll make sure we've got them right. We do not, I said not, have an option on the parcels that we're proposing. We have a purchase agreement. And our purchase agreements, there are three of them for three separate parcels. They are in full force and effect. And I spoke with my attorney on the way over here tonight and he reassured me that that was true. So we, we have met with both officers of the church and some of the neighbors, as well as the immediate property owners that are sellers very recently. And at that meeting, the application that's before you in concept was approved. I cannot make a commitment to you that I will build Phase Two or Phase Three tonight, that those will be built if Phase One is successful. I can't promise you when I will build Phase Two or Phase Three. But I will commit to you that if approved, we'll build Phase One. And if Phase One is successful, we have every reason to believe that there will be a Phase Let me see. Tonight's task, it's to exchange ideas and feedback. And I'm looking forward to hearing from each of you on this concept. And I'm here to answer any questions that may help you form ideas. And again, we, we're excited about creating a Pocket Neighborhood. We think it's an excellent idea. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Shane Wetter. Comments, questions, thoughts from the members of the commission, please. Commissioner Carpenter.
Mr. Shane Wetter, when you mentioned that, that you have purchase agreements on three parcels and you're indicating that you would be willing or able to commit to doing all the and you're indicating that you would be willing or able to commit to doing all the other units, assuming the first phase was completed, do you have purchase agreements on those parcels as well?
I would suggest to you that we have a understanding that if Phase Two is developed, that we would be the developer of that phase. We have contractual documents that bind sellers to perform for us on Phase One. We do not have any contract for Phase Three, although we have had conversations with the landowner of Phase Three.
But Phase Two?
Phase Two, we have a commitment that when that property is developed, if the approvals and entitlements for Phase One are granted, that we would be the developer of Phase Two.
And when you say a commitment, what does that consist of? I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, we have not made a formal commitment as a company to buy more land than we currently have purchase agreements on, unless there's entitlements and unless there is a practical reason to proceed. I cannot tell you tonight that we will build Phase Two, other than I can tell you that we will seek approvals for a second phase in concert with Phase One. If Phase Two is not approved, we would not build Phase One. Does that make sense?
It does to some point, but what I'm really trying to get at is whether you truly have control. I'm not asking you what your intentions are relative to when you might be seeking approvals, but getting approvals on land that you don't control, that are owned by third parties for which you don't have purchase agreements, is what I'm getting at.
Yeah. And I think that rather than focus on my business transaction, I would rather answer the question this way for you. Our business transaction is not going to become part of the public record tonight, and we have absolute control of all the land for Phase One, and we have a commitment that has been made, that if we decide to go forward with Phase Two, and if the owners of Phase Two decide to go forward with Phase One, there's mutual contingencies that work both ways. To answer your question that you're not asking, there is no date certain that we would commit to building Phase Two, and there is no date certain that there's an absolute commitment to demolition of the church. Does that help you understand that the church doesn't have an entitlement to sell me at this point? So without an approval, we would not, I can't answer your question.
You're answering questions that I'm not asking and not answering the questions that I am asking. But I think what I'm understanding you to say is that at this point in time, you have commitments, binding commitments by way of purchase agreement for Phase One. Phase Two and Three appear to be squishy.
We have business understandings on Phase Two that have no date certain.
Mr. Rock?
Could you please elaborate on what you plan to do with the proposed courtyard set? Because based on the drawing that I have here, it appears that each house will have its own front yard, and there is no courtyard, per se, in the drawing here.
Sure. The courtyard components can either be side-loaded into the plan or they can be rear-loaded into the plan. I'll just switch. So the courtyard could be...
Side-loaded, rear-loaded, or front porch?
By design.
Commissioner Forrest?
My understanding that one of the main concepts of this whole model is to have a shared commons, and that's what we, I think what Commissioner Rock is referring to as courtyard, that often porches are part of it, not instead of it, and that even if there are side yards and private spaces, that there's a shared common ground, and that the public parts of the homes themselves are oriented toward and have a view of that shared common ground. And looking at the linear plan here, and also the subsequent phases, it looks more like a lineup of townhomes than it does a community, a neighborhood, or what I think this author would, well, in most of his literature that I've seen, and I've not read the book, but I've perused a lot of it, of the information from his website and blogs and things. And that's a really important point that he makes, including saying the shared common space is what holds it together and gives it vitality. Arrange the necessaries like mailboxes, parking areas, and common buildings to have the residents walking through the commons to their front doors, orient active interior rooms to look into the shared space. And I like the idea. I mean, it's still, to me, it harks back to Cluster Homes of the 80s, but except that this guy has his own vision, it includes front porches, and he limits the number to eight or so homes, maybe eight to 12 at the most. So he's gotten a little more specific. But basically, it's not necessarily a new model, but it's not necessarily a bad one either. I just, to me, this is a bit linear, too. I agree with Commissioner Rock that it would be nice to see the model implemented if it were.
Yeah. The original concept, we had front yards facing south. We've reversed that now. We also are indifferent, frankly, whether the garage access is through J Place or Indianola. That's not a big deal. The front yards have both a sidewalk, a transition landscaped space, and then an elevation change as well to the front porches. So that's one element of community is the front porch. The courtyard, if side-loaded, the courtyard would be less community-focused and more private outdoor space. But the rear yards of these homes are one continuous green space. It's over 25 feet separation between the rear of the buildings and the rear of the lot line, and it's the entire east-west zone of the site. So a expanse that would be a common space. So there's, it really, it really will depend on how the final architecture of this project comes together. This is a concept plan, and that there would be multiple iterations between here and implementation. So I'm not trying to evade your question. I'm just, I'm not sure if it's going to be a side yard, courtyard, or if it's going to be more emphasis to the rear. The front, I think I pretty clearly can speak that there will be a six-to-eight-foot front porch. The porch will be elevated, probably about 30 inches above the sidewalk grade, and there will be a very definite buffer between the public space and that transitional space.
Mr. Potts?
I don't have a lot of new comments on top of what I mentioned last time you were here, so I'll keep them very brief. I like the idea of this in terms of the drive for sustainability, the increased density. I think the location is right relative to 50th and France to try something like this. I think the goals of managing stormwater are good, and also the walkability, which all ties into location. Since we're being asked to comment on Phase One, I believe, not Two and Three, I'm not convinced with the information you've presented that you can pull all this off with the site constraints you have, and also the recognition of the various regulatory hurdles we have here. So I guess I just want to continue to say I support the ideas. With the limited sketch plan information that you've brought, I can't quite see it clearly in execution.
Appreciate those comments.
Mr. Forrest?
I like the concept of pocket neighborhoods. I think that the author of the book that's kind of guiding this has some very good, somewhat even romantic, ideas about what can be accomplished with them. I'm not personally keen on the location. There's already transitional zoning between 50th and France and R1, and there are homes there that are established, some of them newer construction, that, you know, I mean, we all have to ask, each and every one of us, do I want this next door to my house? Because it's the same thing as plopping it into an R1 neighborhood. And if I have a single-family home, that's just like if they were going into my, you know, next door to my house or whatever. It's R1 all the way from there to City Hall after those two duplexes. So it's, and I don't know, you know, personally, I'm not real keen on expanding that. But even outside of that, my biggest concern is that it would involve amending the comp plan to accommodate it. And I said this the last time, too, that that was a two-year process with a lot of public input, and I think we need to honor that process. I think it would be great to consider, as we go forward, either with future comp plans or in a proactive way versus a reactive way, making an amendment to the comp plan. But that's after some research and deciding where in our city this is, it is most appropriate. Maybe this is it, but we haven't really studied it either. And so obviously, this is just a feedback thing, and I'm just telling you, one of my major concerns is the fact that it's way outside of the guide plan and even further outside of our current zoning. So it makes me uncomfortable, because we all rely on the zoning when we buy our homes to think that, okay, the gas station isn't going in next door, or whatever isn't going in next door, and that my home values aren't going to be affected, one way, you know, one way or the other, in a sudden and surprising way. Another question was, when you talk about the green roofs, is that over the garage space then, or the homes themselves, or what were you referring to?
Over the garage deck would be green.
Okay. And then, and do you have any experience with your company with green roofs so far?
The green roof concept is not something our company has done specifically, but the Minnesota Green Roof Council has extensive work, and they've worked with our design staff on other projects. So I'm confident they can get it right.
Other comments? I have a couple. I was at the presentation today as well, and I like the idea of pocket neighborhoods as the author of the book, Ross Chapin, described it. The idea of the smaller quality homes do fit a market niche. He did give an example. In one case, a neighbor was concerned about the property values, what was going to happen to the property values. And in fact, they found out that the property values of the adjoining properties went up, although they did not go up as much or as quickly as the properties, as the pocket home properties. So that's something to consider. For everyone's benefit, the website that Commissioner Forrest referred to, and it was discussed at the meeting, at the presentation today, is www.pocket-neighborhoods.net. And I would recommend or suggest that people take a look at that, because it is an extremely interesting concept, a way to provide some, some new, a new type of housing in Edina that's not the traditional suburban housing, but would be attractive. And I think you're, I have no reason to disagree with your market research that says there is a wish for this kind of property in Edina, because people who want to move out of their larger homes but don't want to move into a condominium, that still want to stay in Edina, are kind of stuck, because we don't have this kind of opportunity available. So I like the idea of pocket homes. Now, with respect to the particular, this proposal, if you were prepared to commit to Phase One, Two, and Three, you could arrange things to fully meet what Mr. Chapin was talking about this afternoon. I share Commissioner Forrest's concern about the linearity of Phase One, and without the additions of the other two phases and the ability to cluster around a common area, that's a bit of a concern that I have. He showed in his presentation some examples of really fine, fine developments, where the design elements that he was advancing were used. He also showed a couple of examples where the developers missed. And if you don't, if you don't do it right, it's not necessarily a good thing, and I think you want to do it right. But I just raised that caution. And again, that goes back to the point of the clustering, which really, in this case, seems to require all three phases or at least two phases. So that are my, that's those comments. Should we do a PUD in R1? That would be one way to satisfy the requirements to do this. Another way that he discussed is to have kind of an overlay and conditional use type of arrangement. There are other ways to do this. I think, I think this concept of the pocket homes is worthy of discussion here in the city of Edina over the next several months, probably. You know, the idea that, yeah, it wasn't provided for in the comp plan, but are we going to be stuck with something every 10 years? You don't amend it, except every 10 years, and something happens in the middle of the period? You know, circumstances change, markets change, new ideas come along, and I think we have to be responsive to those new ideas. And this is not to take away from an R1 district. The reason it's not R1 is because it's not, technically, R1 requires a single building, and this isn't necessarily a single building. It's got the garage underneath, so you've got some definitional issues and density issues and that type of thing that you have to work around. So I don't think, it's true that people need to be able to rely on zoning, but what was zoning in R1 in 1950 is not necessarily what is zoning in R1 in 2011 and 2015 and 2020. So that's my comments. Mr. Forrest?
Yeah, I guess, you know, I agree with you. I don't think it's something we need to wait 10 years before we look at again. I just think that when we do something, we, especially when it's this drastic, and it does affect a neighborhood that's existing, that it does need some careful consideration and not a quick reaction to a particular project, which has been a frustration of mine in the past, as far as, not with regard to this project, as far as just, let's do this and then amend, instead of, okay, why did we, what's the reason we have it the way we have it, and work from there, and look at our reasoning. So I agree. I think that this is something that we should consider, and I think it's, we don't necessarily need to be stuck in the mud either because of our zoning. But nonetheless, I think all of us, to a certain extent, with the model that we have now, its zoning, we do carry some expectations with it. So it's just good to be aware of that and recognize that, and that that's certainly going to be the case in this neighborhood, so.
Other comments by the commission? I thank the commission for the comments. Thank you, Mr. Schenwetter, for your comments tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you for the people who came and were expecting that I was going to let you talk, and for understanding why I didn't. But if this comes to a point where a site plan is proposed, there will be plenty of opportunity to react and to comment, and I hope, Mr. Schenwetter, you're in constant contact with the neighborhood, and I hope the neighbors are in constant contact with you about this. And again, just because it's worth taking a look at, because I think we need to think about this in the city of Edina, www.pocket-neighborhoods.net, it's a very interesting thing to take a look at, so.
I thank you for your time. I thank you for your time, your comments, and I can assure you that we will again extend an invitation to the neighbors to participate in our next design charrette. I hope they avail themselves of that opportunity, and it will be chaired by Ross, who spoke today. He and I spent the afternoon together. He couldn't be here tonight. He's at the U of M giving the presentation again. Have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
He's from, he's from Seattle, but he's a U of M grad, and he's originally from White Bear Lake, so he's, he's a Minnesotan fellow. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is zoning ordinance amendment revisions to approved site plans. Chris, do you want to present this?
Well, I have nothing to show, but everybody received.
At least introduce it.
Sure. There are actually three on the agenda for the seating. The first one that is being proposed is the revision to site plan. The city council directed staff to draft an ordinance amendment to clearly define when changes may be made to approved site plans. Current Edina ordinance is really not very clear. Minor changes are not identified. The council advised that the ordinance could be patterned perhaps after the city of Bloomington's regulations. You were given the draft ordinance amendment that was considered by the planning commission on June 29th. The commission, this commission, tabled the item for staff to conduct a survey of how other cities dealt with minor changes. The survey was included in your packets. The proposed ordinance would allow staff to administratively approve changes to a site plan up to 5% increase or a total of 10,000 square feet. This is the same as the city of Bloomington. The planning commission is asked to consider the proposed amendment, and if comfortable with the language, make a recommendation to city council. The existing city ordinance, minor changes may be authorized by the planner. Proposed changes to the proposed site plan affecting structural types, building coverage, mass, intensity, height, allocation of open space, and all other changes which affect the overall design of the property shall be acted on, reviewed, and processed by the commission and council in the same manners as they reviewed and processed the original site plan. And then in your packet, the chart of all the other cities do indicate that most, if not all, with the exception of Edina, city staff allows revisions to do it administratively with some, somewhat with thresholds. And Kiri Tiga, the planning director, is proposing the 5% increase or a total of 10,000 square feet that would trigger then a site plan review. The attached ordinance is highlighted with the new language, and if you've had an opportunity to review it, we're here to discuss.
Thank you, Chris. As she mentioned, this is pretty much the similar to what the city of Bloomington has. I, I think the, the action we ought to think about tonight is if we are, if we like this, that we would recommend that the council adopt this. If we have concerns and we want to run it back to staff with concerns that we have, we can do that. But I'd like to have some kind of action on this tonight, either to move it on to the city council or to suggest changes and, or revisions or concerns that would go back to the staff for consider, for further consideration. So with that, I'll open it up for discussion. Mr. Carpenter?
With respect to the, the proposed ordinance, I had, I guess, one comment and maybe one question for us to consider. The comment would be with respect to subparagraph two, the refusingly proposed increase in the floor area of structures not to exceed 5%. The question is, 5% of what? And I think the obvious answer to that, which perhaps should be included in the ordinance, would be 5% of the floor area, you know, in effect, you know, immediately in effect or effect immediately prior there, too. Something along those lines so that we actually identify what we're calculating the 5% off of. And then I had a, a question that was noodling, which is, how many, what, at what frequency should we be accepting of site plan modifications? You know, what I'm concerned about is a sort of kind of a serial process where you nick 5% off, you come back and ask for another review, and you nick another 5% off. I mean, it's obviously in the discretion of the, of the city staff, but I'm sort of surmising that, that perhaps it ought to be one bite off the apple and not multiple.
I, I think with the ordinance, if, if you take an off 5%, you don't need to get approval. This, this ordinance thus, thus, that the water's proposal would not have even come before us because they were reducing the size. I think the, the theory behind the ordinance is that a reduction in size and coverage from what the site plan approved does not need to be reviewed. Your suggestion is, you don't want somebody to add 5% and then
Right.
A month later, well, let's add another 5%, and all of a sudden, the change is really a 10% change, not a 5% change, or
Something along those lines.
Nine and a half percent change, I guess. So I, I don't, I, I think your point is good, that, yeah, you can do it once in the process. Mr. Potts?
I, I like the point that Commissioner Carpenter made, and in general, I think this is a good improvement to the ordinance. I, I support it, I guess, in terms of being clear about that subsection two describing floor area. Perhaps if we just identify a proposed increase in the gross floor area, I think that, that cleans it up.
Okay. Commissioner Forrest?
I'm not falling hard one way or the other on this, but some things that occur to me are that I don't want there to be an implication that if it's a minor change, the planner will approve it. And I know it doesn't directly say that, but because it's so explicit here in, in these three items, it almost looks like if it meets these requirements, then it's approvable. And I'm thinking that even a reduction could affect drainage, it could, there, if a floor plan change could affect height, it could affect views, it could affect landscaping, those kinds of things. And, I mean, the planner can use judgment on those things as well, but a 5% isn't necessarily really minor, depending on the size and location of the project. So I guess that's just an issue. The other thing is currently, we say build to the final site plan, and, once again, I guess that's what we see, what we're expecting to see built, and that's what the public sees and is expecting to see built. So if there indeed are minor changes, great. I just don't know. I mean, I think the planner would use good discretion, but I can see where my, what is called a minor change might seem, actually end up being more significant than what we would expect.
Well, the, with respect to the area, it's 5% or 10,000 square feet. So if you had a 4,500 square foot house, you know, they could, they could increase it by 225 square feet so that, you know. Well, you know, if it's, if it's more than 10,000 square feet, it's, it's too, it's not minor, so. You know, in the, in the first, in the first line, you could say minor changes may but need not be authorized by the planner, just to make the point, which I think is a good one, that we're granting discretion to do something, you don't have to exercise your discretion. And, and the planner could require a change to come before the planning commission.
I think that would be a good change, actually.
There was something else, once, you know. Somehow, rather, we got to incorporate some language that says you can do this one time. Commissioner Platter?
I had a couple of comments on here. I like it all, those seem to simplify it. But, and the, and the first one, plan modifications, minor changes may be authorized by the planner. Do we want to add anything that the planner could attach additional conditions of approval on that? Or is that, you know, if there's a, some, some type of horse trading going on or something with that, if remove this, they would attach that? Or is that something that shouldn't be going back to either the planning commission or the council? And then on, on sentence two, I would, I would say any proposed, not just increase in the floor area, but any change in the floor area beyond that? Because I think, still, if you decrease, I think it could, if you approve something at a certain size, if you, if you even allowed the decrease, it could, it could be a big effect on what that property became. You know, you, you could be looking for a certain density, but decrease it to, to go to something else, and it takes away the intent of what the original proposal was. And then I'm not sure on the 10,000 square feet, that seems a little high to me, but it could go either way on that. Item three, all proposed revisions comply with city, city code requirements and be consistent with the conditions of approval. Would we want to add something to that, that, just, just to confirm that any changes have to still be with the intent of the original conditions and shouldn't override them by any means? And then, I know there's a lot of things, but finally, would, again, the, the planner would have that approval to make these changes, but is that something that should or would or would want to come back to be noted for people to know that the changes were made? In other words, if a sidewalk was changed or landscaping was changed, it, it's a minor one, but would people want to know that for future reference, at least to understand what changes were made to the, the property? I know it's a couple of things, but those are my comments. And some were, Commissioner Forrest, for examples, I think has stated one or two of them previously, but.
You said them both.
So, so I think where we're, where we are right now is, is we want this to be a one-time deal, that the planner may but need not authorize a change that meets these requirements, that
They're not under any obligation to.
Right. The, it's, it's not just an increase, it would, it could be a decrease. Their decreases can be significant, as significant as increases, so it ought to be plus, you know, plus or minus 5% or 10,000 square feet, gross floor area, subject to the, consistent with the conditions of approval, and that the change, if approved by the planner, be publicized somehow. I'm not sure exactly how it would be publicized, maybe, you know, an opportunity for people to know that it happened
Yeah, or something.
And that, and that a record be made of it somehow. Other, other comments or concerns?
I think those are all good.
Okay, well, why, I guess what the consensus is then, that we send this back to Carrie to incorporate these suggestions and bring this back to us. Commissioner Forrest?
I agree that 10,000 seems a little high to me. I'm not sure that, in the greater scheme of things, it is, but it sounds like a lot if it's a smaller project. Could be a part, one end of a strip mall or something like that, where 10,000 square feet could make a, a big difference, so. I'm, I'm, it's, again, it's just a, a question.
Let's ask, let's ask Carrie to, to look at that and to comment specifically on that issue when, when he comes back. Does that, does that make sense?
Or, or does the 5% keep you covered? I, I don't.
Somehow, you can do the math to figure out what, but I'm not prepared to do that.
It's too late for that.
That's why we went to law school. Okay, so, any other discussion on this one? Great. The next one is the real estate sign ordinance. Apparently, we've got an ordinance, the ordinance requires real estate listing signs of, what is it, 10 square feet or
Six.
Six square feet. And that's fine as long as you don't put the text, the number, to get the thing on top of the sign, and then hang your name off the bottom of the sign. And some observant citizen said, wait a second, people are doing this, and we've got an ordinance that says six, and all these signs are greater than six. So we're proposing an ordinance amendment to expand the size of the sign to 16 square feet for non-residential, and where is it for R1 and two?
Ten.
10 square feet in residential areas, and added the additional requirement that the signs shall be removed within seven days after the closing. I'm not sure that the best thing to do when somebody's violating the ordinance is to pass a different ordinance, but it may be easier to do that than to send the bill, send the building inspector out. So this is probably a good, a good ordinance. Other comments, concerns, questions?
Just, just support of these changes. I, I agree, six to 10 seems reasonable, and particularly like the removal within seven days.
Mr. Platter?
Not to be the squeaky wheel, but I'm not sure it should be expanded upon. I mean, it, it seems to be a good size as it is, and I realize people are putting things on it, but if you look at the 10-square-foot one, it's, it's a billboard in the yard, and I just, I'm not a huge fan of expanding it, or at the most, eight or something, but not to the, you look at the, the one that's a reference to the 10-square-feet, and that's, that's, that's pretty large for the front of your house, if you get a bunch in a row or something.
I concur. I think, you know, we, we've got a choice. We can go with what the current industry practices, or as a community, we can set a standard that we feel is acceptable. I mean, really, all you need is about four square inches in a QR code, so, I mean.
Anybody else wish to comment?
I think the purpose, if I understood correctly, for these proposed changes was to essentially try to find a way to bring our signage, or the signage that's actually out there, into conformity with the ordinance, as opposed to try to force it the other way around, with the realization that, that there's a lot of people out there posting signs that are otherwise out of conformity, and that we are not geared up to, to enforce them. So if we, if we do nothing, or if we leave it the way it is, it sounds to me like we're just going to have a lot of non-conforming signs out there, with people asking us to, you know, on occasion, it sounds like, asking us to enforce something that is difficult and maybe questionable in terms of necessity to enforce. So from that perspective, I, I guess I'm kind of in favor of, of moving forward with this, with an ordinance that maybe matches the signage that people are actually putting out there. Now, I'm not sure if, if, if 10 square feet is what does that or not. I'm assuming that when staff proposes that, that they have that in mind.
Commissioner Forrest?
Yeah, I guess the flip side of it is that realtors communicate very well, as far as what's specific to one municipality or another. So again, I'm not landing really hard one way or another, but I don't think we need to necessarily change to meet their standards either, if, if what we have or choose to do is also reasonable. Kind of like, I'll leave that one up to other people, but I, I don't think we necessarily need to increase it, but I think we do need to make whatever it is clear.
Mr. Potts?
If I could add clear, I guess, clear and enforceable, what's the mechanism if we, if we do increase it? And that gets violated, will we be And that gets violated, will we be starting to enforce the, the new ordinance?
Is that the building inspector that, uh, that does that, or is it the police?
That's our sign inspector.
The sign inspector?
Yes, we do have a sign inspector. And she received a lot of calls on a couple of blocks that had signs that were non-conforming. And so it is, it is problematic, because it's not, the real estate companies, my understanding is, they don't place the signs, they have the contract, and they're all a standard size, and then they have these add-ons with the, the names of the realtors that are tagged on, and then website information and that sort of thing. So the industry standard for size has changed. So we do get complaints if they, and there are people that are very aware of what an ordinance...
Is this intended to bring it into compliance with the industry standard then?
Yes, yes.
On that basis, I, I think I would support the change.
I, I think I'm of like mind on that. I think... I'm not sure it's up to the city of Edina to dictate to the real estate industry what, what they should do, because it's hard for us to do that. I think, um... I do think you've got to have, if you have an ordinance, you better enforce it, because you shouldn't have an ordinance that you don't enforce, because that just fosters disrespect for the law. On the other hand, you know, I... I'm in favor of the change, just because I'm in favor of the change, I guess, so. Commissioner, Commissioner Rock?
I guess my concern is, if in five years, the industry standard is 15 square feet, are we going to change our ordinance again to?
Yes.
Meet, meet that?
Couple people will.
I, I won't be on the commission's then, so...
That's why Matt's asking, who probably will.
Commissioner Forrest?
You know, if, if we want to send it forward to the council with the 10-square feet, I will go along with that, as long as our comments are on the record regarding the fact that we don't think that we really have to knuckle under to it and do it, but, uh, they can use their judgment on that if they choose to revise it.
Is that, is that a motion?
No.
No, the, the consensus on the last one was that we're going to send it back to the staff. I think if we're going to send this on to the city council with the recommendation, I think we should have a motion and a second and an action on it.
Well, I'll make a motion to, to approve the sign ordinance changes that are proposed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I, there were some good, some good discussion on this. There are some concerns about changing this ordinance, and I think, uh, council, when we, when this is sent on up to the council, assuming we vote to send it up to the council, that the record should go with it, so that the council knows what some of the concerns are. Having said that, are we ready for a vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Jackie, you want to do a roll call?
No.
Yes. Yes.
No.
Yes. Because I want to change it, because I want to change it. Thank you. And then the last one, um... Utility and mechanical equipment ordinance. Chris, do you want to discuss this one a little bit, please?
Sure, this is on the list, um, because a little bit of history, um, we had an issue with York Gardens having an air conditioner unit installed, and it was within the setback area. The city has not, um, hasn't looked at utility equipment for setback purposes, um, and that's how it came to our attention. There was some issues with that, um, location. It was relocated, um, to a conforming location. The decision point, should the city require setbacks for utility equipment, um, the options are to leave the requirement as it is today and enforce setback regulations for all utility equipment, as we ended up doing for York Gardens, or amend the zoning ordinance to exempt small utility equipment and require setbacks for the larger equipment. City staff did do a survey that was included in your packets. Based on the survey and issue, staff is recommending the attached ordinance that you have. The ordinance would exempt small utility mechanical equipment from required setbacks. As has been the standard practice in Edina, the ordinance would require setbacks to be met for equipment over 80 square feet or six feet tall. Additionally, the ordinance would require setbacks for air conditioning units in the R1 and R2 districts, similar to accessory uses. This regulation would make the standard practice in Edina of requiring a five-foot side air setback for small air conditioning units adjacent to single-family homes and duplexes. That has never been specifically called out in our ordinance, and it's always been lumped together with accessory structures, which has been, again, a little bit problematic for people to understand. And so the ordinance was attached in your packet, and the highlighted area indicates the changes that would be made, and that's what we're here to discuss.
I do recall at one time, uh, zoning panel I was on, I'm pretty sure we had to grant a variance to a house someplace to put a, uh, the air conditioner on the side of the house.
Yes, what, what the ordinance, we would categorize it as an accessory structure, so it does require a five-foot setback, but it's not specifically called out in the ordinance, an air conditioner requiring a five-foot setback. So it is very confusing for people if they look in the ordinance. They don't understand that an air conditioner unit is considered an accessory structure in the R1 and R2 zone. So it'd be nice to, to, to call that out specifically, and then also to address our larger units on some of the other private property.
Other comments? Commissioner Forrest?
Well, I'm not sure it's really clear here, what's a larger unit and what's a smaller unit, and I guess one of my other concerns is, um, large air conditioning units, mechanicals or whatever, for, um, properties that are even adjacent to residential districts, I think can be concerned, not just R1, R2, but just residential in general, and that was the case at York. And also then the situation where you could have a conditional use, whether it's a church, a golf course, a school. They're noisy mechanicals, then they're in an R1, and I don't know if they'd really be clearly addressed under this, because with anything other than a five-yard, five-foot setback, which could be minimal in some situations, it might not really be adequate or fair.
Well, uh, what if, um... Let's take a school, which is a conditional use in an R1 district, um, and suppose it wanted to, they, they needed to put a, a seven-foot, they did a unit like they did at York, at the new place over there in York. Would that have only a five-foot setback requirement? Since it's in an R1 district?
No, if it's 80 square feet or six feet tall, it would be required to be all setback requirements, otherwise on just for your conditioning, so on. Well, if it's a conditional use, then you'd have a 50-foot setback. It'd be the same as...
Okay.
As the building, because there's accessory setbacks in the conditional use.
There are 50 feet, or?
Um, R1s. Because I can think of a situation where a church has a, has their air conditioning unit is very close to, um, residential lots, and it's noisy, but, um, I don't know what the ordinance was at the time either, but I, just anticipating that, I, as we're an infill suburb, I just, I would like a little bit more clarity, I guess, in the language, and to really consider the different possibilities that could occur.
If you're in a, um, conditional use area, you can increase the setback in that, over and above what the ordinance provides?
Yes, I mean, there would be deeper setbacks required for a conditional use and accessory uses in a conditional use situation.
Do we require an additional process then, just if they want to put in a bigger air conditioning condenser?
It would not require an amendment to the conditional use permit, but it would require that the underlying setbacks would apply for that conditional use.
So it could be then very close to the lot line, if there, if nothing was, um, in the additional, nothing added was in the conditional use permit?
Well, the, the all conditional use buildings or structures, including accessory buildings, um, they would require a 50-foot setback. But it perhaps would need some clarity in that, um, we did add a condition about accessory buildings, um, and that all conditional use buildings or structures, including accessory buildings, would require 50-foot setback. I, I mean, I would read it as, um, that it would need a 50-foot setback in a conditional use situation. Generally, they're put up near the building anyway, um, so it's not going to be...
But there are, and a lot of churches in the, at least in this part of town, that are very, very close to homes, so. And once again, I'm thinking about the whole York comments thing where, you know, it was across the street, so it was a distance away, but it was still, uh, um, bothered to them.
But if we'd had this ordinance, they'd had to put it back where they relocated it to. They could not have put it where they put it.
Yeah, it's just a, I mean, so you get something that's just underneath this, you know, square footage, cubic footage.
They could put that there anyway, right? Because it was a structure?
Right.
I mean, so it was already solved for, right?
I suppose, yeah, I suppose.
Trying to remember, I don't recall for sure how.
Anyway, it was, that one was covered under the structure one, right? That was considered a structure, so it didn't need the structure setback.
Correct. How do you measure 80 square feet for making a determination as to the size of the mechanical equipment? Are we talking about surface area? And if so, what surface area? I'm not sure how that was, how that number came up and, and how the calculation is supposed to occur.
It would be 80 square feet if you're drawing dimensions around the perimeter of it, the footprint of it, right?
Okay, footprint, okay.
Commissioner Forrest?
You know, we've got two things here. We've got big ugly utility facilities, boxes and things, structures, but then we've also got the noise aspect to it, and I'm not sure if they should necessarily all be lumped together, because one is a visual situation or a size situation that might be able to be more adequately screened, and a noise situation might be more difficult to really address in a way that's satisfactory to the people that, um, may live or work around there.
Just a couple of things, unless you have a thought, if you're agreeable?
Go, no, I...
One of the things I was gonna...
I really haven't thought.
Being generous. I, a couple of things, I think, first of all, I think the size is too large, which you consider small. You say six feet tall, and my concern is six feet tall, it's, if that's allowed to sit on the edge of the right of way or something, does that, is that too large for people to see around it or over it? And kind of same thing on the square footage side, I think that's too large. And then regardless, should these things be screened? Uh, I don't think it requires in here that these be screened, and my comment is, should they be screened, at least with some landscaping or something around them? I don't know if it's always practical or not, but, um, versus letting these cabinets sit out there. And then the other piece is the noise, noise requirements. I don't know if it's addressed in this one, or if that goes back to the building code, what the noise requirements of that equipment would be as well, for both screening of it and, and the noise, uh, piece to it. In other words, with that, the clo, you could have it close enough, but then the noise would be a problem, so you'd have to move it because of that.
I don't, I don't know the answer to that, and, uh... It seems to me that we've had, that this isn't as easy as it looks.
No, I, it, it seems like there should be more research into this, or more...
Yeah, why don't, why don't we...
In-depth?
Why don't we ask Kerry to take a look at what, some of the things we've said here, and then, uh... Bring this back at the next meeting. It's interesting, if you look at the chart...
Yeah.
Of the number of communities that don't require anything, um, and maybe they haven't had a situation like we had with this one, but I think it's, I think it's worthwhile having an ordinance that, that talks about this, but I think we need to have a little bit more, uh, consideration on this one. Does that make sense? Is that, is that okay with Commissioner Forrest?
I like that idea. I guess when I'm looking at these, though, if it says, you know, setback required for utility and mechanical equipment, to me, a lot of this seems to be more applicable to utilities, because some, some of them actually express it, you know, utilities be underground, but not enforced. I think maybe a lot of these ordinances are focused more on utility boxes than they are mechanical, um, features, so it would be nice to see if anybody's doing anything that's a little bit more progressive with the, um, mechanical things where there's noise, or fumes, or steam, or something, but result.
Good point. Other comments? Okay, so we, uh, we did pass one ordinance on to the city council, and we've asked two to go back for further consideration and work to be brought back to us. Other, uh, comments? Okay, I don't think, since we're sending it back, we don't need to take an action specifically. Correspondence and petitions, you received council connection. Chair and commission member comments. Any comments by any of the members? Yes?
Well, I saw it, um, it's in the paper today as well, but there is a committee getting together that they're trying to put together for transportation options, especially for seniors, and they were soliciting people who might be interested in serving on that committee, so I just wanted to bring it up here as well, and, um, the contact information, call City Hall, yes, to figure out who wants to really hear about it. But I think it's a, it's a really, um, important thing going forward, be, as far as addressing transportation in general in our city, that we have some options that, um, for people who maybe choose not to drive under certain circumstances, who need to go to other communities or in this community, whatever. I think it's some stuff that would help us more fully explore that whole topic, so please participate if you're interested.
Thank you. Other comments? WWW dot pocket slash neighbor, dash neighborhoods dot net. I recommend it to your consideration. Staff comments? Good. Then, if there's no other business to come before the commission...
Mr. Chair, I'd move adjournment of this meeting of the planning commission.
I would second.
It's been moved and seconded. To adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. We are adjourned.
Didn't invite this.